I'll call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Alabama Community College System to order. I want to welcome everyone in attendance today, the presidents, staff, and any visitors we have. Thank you for your interest in our work and we appreciate your presence here today. Next on our agenda is the implication to be given by Dr. Humphrey Lee. Thank you for being here, Dr. Lee. Appreciate it.
Like the, just one of my favorite verses from Romans 12. "I urge you therefore, my brothers and my sisters, by the mercies of God, to present your bodies a living and a holy sacrifice, which is your spiritual form of worship, and do not be conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that you can prove what the will of God is, that which is good, acceptable, and perfect." Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the opportunities you give us, for the work that you give us, the work that you give us to improve the lives of our students in our areas, and the work of this board to guide and direct us in the paths that are where we are needed and to make wise decisions that would impact the future of the Alabama citizens. Thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the many blessings of living in this great country. Thank you for the freedom that we each enjoy. Thank you for those who serve our country to protect those freedoms. And we do ask for wisdom to make correct choices, correct decisions, that will benefit all citizens of the state of Alabama. We ask you to bless our time together, and we pray that the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart would be accepted on your side, and I offer this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the robe? Here.
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 We have four. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Each trustee was provided with a copied agenda well in advance of the meeting today. We've had great conference calls explaining issues that action items that are on the agenda and other information. My thanks to the chancellor and his staff for their participation in those conference calls that are most informative and just excellent. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as has been presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
It's been a motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Brown?
Okay.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor approving the agenda, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. Item five is the approval of the minutes of the July 22 regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Everybody was presented and sent a copy of this prior to this meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Would you miss forward? Second, I'm John Caldwell. Any questions about the minutes? Any discussion about the minutes? Any corrections to the minutes? If not, we'll call the question. All those in favor approving the minutes of the July 22, 2015 meeting, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved. Item six is public comment. No one on the agenda for public comment. Item staff, instruction, and student services, facilities, physical information, technology, adult education, workforce development, action items. Chancellor, I-
Mr. Vice President, I would recommend approval of items seven, A, one, two, and three.
I have a recommendation to approve items seven, A, one through three. Once again, I'll mention, I think we had a conference call, conference call, calls plural, on these action items, and I think they were fully explained to each one of the trustees. I'll entertain a motion to approve items seven, A, one through three. So move. Motion by Mr. Beckenally, a second by Mr. Davis. Okay. Any discussion on these action items? Any questions for the chancellor or staff on these action items? There being none, once again, item seven, A, one. John C. Avenue Community College purchase instructional equipment. Item two, Foster State Community College addition to instructional site. Item three, Alabama Community College system allocation of the 2015-16 two-year college system and prison education operations and maintenance appropriation. That is the question. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, and please raise your hand. All those opposed, like sign. Items seven, A, one through three are approved. Item eight, executive legal, human resources, and public information. And I would recommend approval of eight, A, item one. On behalf of course, action item eight, A, one, Alabama Community College system memorandum of understanding with the Department of Commerce. I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Motion by Ms. Browns, there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Comments, questions for the chancellor or his staff? There being none, we'll call the question on the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Commerce. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. Item eight, A, one is approved. Item nine, subsidiary items and other business that I will enter into key and critical orientation. Chancellor, thank you for setting this up for the trustees. I know we're all eager to learn more.
It's our pleasure, and I'm going to hold item one for more session if that would be acceptable. We're going to talk a bit more about that, but I would like to turn to Dr. Crawford in academic programs, and he's going to set the stage for the first several items.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's my honor to stand before you to talk to you about the instructional and student services division here at the Alabama Community College System office. We have a number of persons who are sitting over there, I guess while I introduce them a little bit later, who will assist me if you have questions. Thank you so much. First thing, you have a notebook in front of you there. If you would, get that notebook, the white notebook there, and it has a PowerPoint presentation on the left-hand side. We did not insert it in there because we wanted you to be able to take that out and walk with me because there'll be a number of documents within the book that I'd like to reference as we go throughout the document. So if you would, take that out, and if you have questions, you can either make them as we go through the presentation, or you can hold those for the end of the presentation so that my staff can adequately address your questions and concerns. We'd like to start our presentation with the three pillars of the system. We deal with adult education, academic education, and workforce development. And couched within that workforce development, you will have your career and technical education programs that are closely aligned with getting people into the workforce, so therefore you'll have that as a separate presentation. There are eight units within the ISS Division, and today we'll touch on seven of those that left athletic out because you may want a separate presentation on those at that particular unit at some later point in time. But we have academic affairs and developmental education, career and technical education, health programs, instructional, where you have general information that we have an instructional specialist that will share with you all some things there, and student services, the state approving agency, leadership in childcare scholarship, and in the athletics ACCC, we'll talk about it a little later. If you would, go to the next slide, you'll see that. You follow me on your-
Mary Steadman, get the robe.
Everybody's up with me? Okay, thank you so much. The unit provides support and technical assistance to our schools, our colleges, and to students in program development and staff development, as well as student support services. We also help with the standards of measurement for program approval. We are in the process of doing a new instructional program review, and we'll share a little bit about that as I go through the presentation. We hold and house the official academic inventory, which will be the listing of all of the approved programs for our institutions to offer to our students, and then we serve as a liaison to external agencies as far as academic, career, technical, and student services concern. You'll have a copy of the chart, and I think inside your tab, if you go to tab A, you'll see organization chart, you'll see a larger version of that, so you can read it a bit better if you're following me on the booklet. It's just a listing of all of the directors, as well as the support staff for each one of those, so you'll have that for your perusal at a later time. Next, I want to cover the academic programs, and that is under the leadership of Dr. Vicky Olson. Dr. Olson, if you would stand over there, and Dr. Vicky Olson is the person who's leading that particular unit. Some statistical information that she shared with you, wants to share with you there. Forty-three thousand one hundred ten students enrolled in general studies, the vibrance program, as of fall of 2014. Now, we hope that number will increase in fall of 2015, which is now, the minute the institutions are going through their enrollment period right now. The four thousand three hundred fifteen ACS students enrolled in AA and AS. AA will be associate in art and associate degree, associate in science degree program as of 2013-14. Our data will be at least a year old before we get it, so get new data to you. The top three instructional areas for credit hour production would be math, English, and biology. If you look on the tab B, you'll see some of those charts that will reflect that information for you on the tab B. First thing that I have listed on there would be the listing of all of degrees and certificates at a glance. We have that information. This is sort of our sheet to use when we're trying to determine whether the courses and the programs have the right number of courses based on AA, AS, AAS, AOT, AAT, and AOT, and I'll tell you what all of those are. We did develop a glossary, which is at the back of the book, which will explain to you what each one of those acronyms would be. Associate in art, associate in science, associate in applied science, associate in applied technology, associate in occupational technology, certificate CUR. You'll see that information a lot, that certificate, and then the STC is the short certificate, and that's designed to get us into the workforce. But that particular first sheet on the tab A will give you a list of all of those, the requirements for each one of the general education requirements, and other information that's necessary to have a program. If you turn over to the next sheet, you will see a listing of award summary by the colleges as to how many college, how many students, how many awards were presented by each college in that blue sheet. You have a blue sheet there of a chart of information, so look at that later on. I'm not going to go through it individually, but if you look at it, you'll see the number of awards that we have as far as short certificates and all of the to your associate degrees. The next slide you see on the screen is a slide of the top ten credit-producing disciplines we have as of 2013-14. You'll see that math, English, and biology, I mentioned this earlier, but nursing, history, psychology, computer science, speech, and business and art. Those are our top ten producing, credit-producing programs in the system. Flip over to the next sheet, you will have top ten programs of study by enrollment, and you'll see that the general studies has the largest number of students participating in that, the credit hour production's there, forty-three thousand plus, and then you have registered nursing, administrative assistance, and so forth. So you see that listing on that chart. Looks, you just follow me on that chart right there. That's one of the first one, and that's the second chart I was referring to right there. There is additionally in that tab, if you flip over to the next page, this is an academic, a list of the academic disciplines and awards given, and they're grouped and presented by race and gender on that particular sheet of paper. I don't have it on the slide, it's not going to be on the screen, so it's going to be in your notebook if you look at that tab. Now, I'm not going to go through each one of those, but you might want to later on look at each one of those and see how our students fare as far as men, women, race, by race as well. Then you'll have another sheet that will give you the degrees and awards by field of study, and we have the group of classifieds and finding groups of agricultural operations related sciences, business management, communication technologies, computer science, and information, so forth, and you'll have all of that that you can follow and read through and get a feel for the number of awards that presented by classification according to the field that they have there. So I'm not going to go through those in detail. We put it in there so that you'll have it for later on reading and review. Going back to my slide, if you look at the screen, you go back to your handout on the slides, and follow me there. The academic director assists colleges in the development of new academic courses, also assists colleges in revision of existing academic courses, and there are over twelve hundred academic courses in the five thousand plus that we have. That's your English, math, science, those type of courses, we call them academic courses. And you can access this information on our website, and I have that on the handout, but it's off of the web of the Alabama Community College System website. The next set of information's going to be under tab, dealing with the STARS agreement.
I have a question about these completers, or I guess truly more about beginners.
Okay.
Do you expect this to adjust or change with the addition of the, what is it, a hundred career coaches that have been hired now, you know, across the state? And I briefed them yesterday, and they're pretty fired up about doing a better job of helping our students know where the jobs are, because it just strikes me as a disconnect. Some of this just seems to be a little bit disconnected from what the workforce needs are, so I don't-
Your question is that, do we see or expect a change?
Yeah.
I would certainly hope so. I think you answered part of the question. I think we do expect that we'll get an increase in students who go on into the career technical fields, and once they find out more about it and the fact that they're getting to have a, earn a really good living off the wages that are earned in those professional fields, we expect that. Now, is it going to show next year? No, it may take two years or three years down the road because of the efforts of the career coaches are working with the high schools, and they're working in all of the school systems, so therefore, by the time they get to us in two, one or two years or three years down the road, then we should have some change. That number has increased. We've had career coaches throughout the last two to three years, and hopefully this will help us in the future.
We need to hope.
Continuing on the tab, make sure I got the right tab. Tab B. If you see the AGSC STARS agreement, we have, AGSC stands for the Articulation and General Studies Committee, and STARS is statewide transfer and articulation reporting system. We have sent it over a million guides since that program been in existence. This is where our students guarantee transferability of courses, that the four-year institution will accept the courses once the students go in and take, sign on a contract with AGSC or the STARS. They can go to any of the institutions in the state, but they need to fill out a contract with each one of those, and this came into effect on legislation in order to make sure that we did not have difficulties in our four-year colleges accepting our students' information.
It's interesting, I might add, this reading was significant legislation. Many, many states don't enjoy this kind of statewide articulation agreement, and in fact, it's not unusual for us to get calls from neighboring states asking, how did you get this into the legislature? How did this happen? So this was, in my opinion, was a big win for the state and for our legislature, and has saved the students of our state. I think we figured almost a billion dollars since it was put into place, just for the reason you said, they don't have to retake all the courses they took when they were with us when they move on to their four-year institution. So this is a big deal.
And then the Alabama Association of Independent Colleges and Universities also join in with us at a later time, and there are thirteen of those, and they're now accepting our students' courses readily, without any difficulty, without having them to retake courses, so there are thirteen of those that join the STARS agreement. In your package, you'll see a document that has a listing of transfer courses. They're all listed in there. It's still behind tab B.
I'm sure.
Yes. Tab B. I'm sure. You're checking, double checking. Looks like this. That is a listing of all of the transfer courses that are in the agreements. Now, the agreements are worked out with the universities, and that is through the two-year college staff as well. On the distance education, you ready to move on to that one? Distance education, the academic affairs person provides guidance with this notification. There are some requirements that you have to do for federal requirements for your accreditation purposes, so we are here to provide assistance to the colleges if they need that particular information. Here's a chart that you'll see in your, under tab, still under that same tab, in the enrollment in online classes, and there's a three-year change that we're showing there, an increase by twenty-one percent, and the number of students who are not taking online classes decreased by twenty-two percent, and you'll see that on the slide there. So there's an increase in online classes and a decrease in those who were not taking Any questions? Okay. The next chart you'll see is credit hours by delivery, method of delivery. The larger portion of that is would be traditional, which is seventy-eight point two percent, and then the others, you'll see how it delivered various methods there. Well, the twenty-one percent delivered through distance education means, that means it may be through hybrid methods, online, it could be TV, radio, it could be video commerce, so about twenty-one percent of the courses are delivered by distance ed. And following that particular slide, back to your handout, I know I got you jumping around, but that's to keep you alert. The next slide is talking about the institutional accreditation. We have a listing, we've provided you a list of all of those in that same tab, a list of all of the institutions' current institutional accreditation status, and when they were coming up for the next review, that's on a particular sheet in your, inside your notebook there. And I mentioned earlier on that we had instructional program review. This instructional program review was done by administrators throughout the system through a task force led by Dr. Olson, and all of the instructional officer, we had people from business, we had some from the information technology department, we had folks from all representation of the system to go through that. We've not finalized that, that is in the process. They've gotten it to a stage now that they're ready to present it to the chancellor to get his approval, and then we'll look at the implementation of that new program review. There's a policy that requires us to do program review on a periodic basis, and so we have tweaked, we have tweaked that, and we revised our form in order to simplify it, and together some data that will be useful in our decision-making process. So that information should be coming out very soon to you, so you don't have a copy of that yet because it has not been approved, but I want to mention the fact that we are on a review in that particular one. And then the final document on the tab three would be dealing with your faculty credentials. Our academic affairs person helps with that particular one there, because we have a lot of questions about rank and placement on salary schedule, advancing in rank, as well as qualification to teach in a certain discipline, so we have that there. It is group by, group A, group B, group C. Group A would be those who are into faculty or instructors who are components of associate degree programs for college transfer. Group B would be a different set of faculty who are classified as persons who are teaching professional, occupational, and technical program that may or may not go toward an associate degree. Then you have group C faculty credentials that are for those who are teaching in those classes that are not part of an associate degree program, which would be primarily occupational programs and CTE programs. Okay? If you have any questions about that, we'd glad to answer those at a later time. Put your note there. Want to move over to developmental education. Just, I'm going to just highlight it, mention it, skip it, and keep going because of the fact that Dr. Robinson will be presenting on that shortly. So in this particular slide here, you'll see some information that she pulled together, and I think she'll share it again with her presentation, but however, you see the number of students over a three-year period who have taken developmental education courses. That means that they're coming to the two-year colleges, not prepared for college-level instruction, so we have a large number of students that we still have to go through and assist and get them ready. The good news is that we actually get them prepared, and they go on to be successful in our program, as well as transfer to the four-year institution. So our development programs at the colleges are working, and our students are being successful and going on to reach even master level and doctoral degree programs. We have documentation of students who have entered through developmental courses and now working on PhD programs throughout the state.
Pardon me, I'm going to interrupt. Trustees, if you have any questions through this orientation process, don't hesitate to jump in. Some of them, you may have to ask some questions and wait till after the orientation, and I know the staff will make themselves available, but don't hesitate right now if there's something on your mind or something that piques your attention. This is all really good information, by the way. It's just an excellent photograph. Go ahead and continue.
Feel free to interrupt. I'll just call on that person across over there to answer that information if we need to get their assistance. All right, the CTE of the career and technical education, sometimes we forget to say career and technical education, but the mission is listed on the slide, you'll see that coming up. It's on the Gene Dunlap. Gene, would you stand, please? And I think many of you know him, and he's been throughout the state doing a lot of work in the area. And they work and develop, plan, and implement, and assess occupational and technical education programs throughout the state. They work on federal regulations, it'll call Perkins Funds, other federal funds that we receive. we receive to support our instructional programs, and Gene has been leading that effort. This particular slide will have the Carl Perkins information, just shared it with you. They conduct a number of professional development workshops for our system personnel on just how to get prepared to teach, teaching methodologies, how to deal with soft skills, how to deal with setting up courses and different kinds of things. They have a number of things that they have, they've gone throughout the state to do professional development, and they're hosting it perhaps in the northern part of the state, central part of the state, as well as the southern part of the state. And this particular slide, you'll see prior learning assessment, that's what we are pushing more of these days, so that we can go back and give credit to those people, those personnel who are changing careers, who've worked for a number of years in a field, and we will go and give them credit for courses that are related to their learning and their work experiences. So we have prior learning assessment. Each institution has been requested to have a person assigned to do that particular task, and our staff here works with them in order to get them with some understanding of that. Now, if you want to see what we have, we have a number of documents on the website, on the Career Technical Education page, that has all this information about prior learning assessment, how to assign value, has the form complete, and institutions are taking those and adapting them to their particular institutional logo and using those to give credit to, like firemen, police officers, other personnel who've worked in the system, or worked in these courses. We have association with CAR CAM, which is a consortium of Alabama Regional Center for Automotive Manufacturing. This particular unit works with them as the liaison for the system and represents the system there. This is a consortium of a number of colleges and manufacturing industries that are working together to promote automotive industries throughout the state of Alabama. That's a federally funded program under the National Science Foundation, I believe. That's correct, Gene? Yes. The Carl Perkins is the one that gives us the most funds that we have to assist the system and the colleges in providing the equipment that's necessary for them to get training on CTE programs. It is monitored through this office, it's the money that is also distributed through this particular office, this system office, and we have to go out and do some monitoring to make sure that they are using the funds as they have been allocated for applied learning as well as getting them job-specific and ready for the workforce. So we do have that. It's associated with high skill, high wage, and high-demand jobs and current and emerging industries. So it's in support of new industries that are coming in. You'll see one slide that's coming up. This is just information slide right here. That is the guide for Perkins. If you want to review it, it's a very thick document, it has several pages, and so we did not print that or put it in your booklet, but if you go to the webpage on the Career Tech, you can pull, download that particular guide and book to see what's allowable for purchases, because you'll be making decisions on purchasing, you'll be approving some equipment requests from institutions that will be associated with Perkins funds. So in order to make sure that you're making the right decision, I would look at that document to look at, see the things that are allowable on that particular thing, and it has to be federal guidelines. And I think it has in that document also the federal regulations that are associated with this particular area. And this is a listing of resources that you can get off the Career Technical webpage as well. Any question on Career Technical? I'd like to now move to the health-related programs. Linda Kater? Linda Kater is our director here, and on the first slide, she indicates that by year 2020, there will be a need for, a national need for about a half million nurses, nursing professionals, as well as another quarter of a million allied health professionals. So you see you have seven hundred fifty thousand persons, seven hundred fifty million, seven hundred fifty thousand people that will be needed in various job capacities related to the health profession. So therefore, our nursing programs are still doing well and they are preparing people for the workforce. Linda helps, she attends a lot of licensed board meetings to keep abreast of what's going on with the Alabama Board of Nursing, as well as with the National League of Nursing and for ACM, which I forgot what that stands for. It may have been your call, so if not, we'll put it in there. It's dealing with the nursing accreditation area, period. Yes, sir.
Ms. Carr, could you define more what calls under allied health professionals?
Allied health is those areas where there's one person that has, has that included all that, which is a question, you need to put that section in regulation.
Is there a program in the system under this that goes into coding process between doctor, hospital?
That's fine, thank you for asking a question for clarification. You'll see that if you go into tab, let me see, tab, tab D, we have a listing of all of the healthcare enrollment programs there with the number of students that are in those programs. So that first sheet shows that. If you look at it, we have eleven thousand three hundred ninety-three students. If you look at male and female, there are nine thousand three hundred forty-eight females and two thousand forty males, males that are participating in allied health programs. So you see there's a shortage of male, and if we have any initiatives, we need to look at initiatives in getting more males into nursing, as well as other non-traditional persons in those professions. The Perkins funds, the funds will help us in assisting us getting students into those areas. That's one of the core indicators for Perkins is to have non-traditional students in certain professions. For instance, men in nursing as well as women in welding. So there's an example of those kinds of things there. Since I have gone to that tab, the next sheet is a list of colleges and specific allied health programs approved for that institution. So you have a long list of that. You can look at any of the institutions, take, for instance, Bellevue and look across and see what particular programs are approved for Bellevue. Likewise, any of the colleges that we have in the system, R N, P N, EMS, radiology, C L T, M A T, and the rest of H I T with information technology and so forth. Okay? That's what that particular sheet is there for. Following that sheet is a, is a, is a framework, conceptual framework for the new nursing curriculum that is being utilized or piloted throughout the system and throughout the nation for conceptual curriculum for nursing. So we thought we would put some information in there for you to take a look at that sheet as well as you go through it. After that sheet, you'll find a curriculum map related to the conceptual framework, and then following that is an information sheet on concept curriculum philosophy for the Alabama community college system. So that information is in there for you to take a look at that. And following that, you will have a list of all of the R N, L P N, NCLEX results, the latest one that we have. We left all of the institutions on there, including our system institution with the state of Alabama, other colleges and universities and private entities that have nursing programs, so that you can see and compare how our students are doing as well as the other students are doing. And then the sheets following that would be our R N, listing of all of the programs that you have in the state of Alabama. And you can take a look at that to see what it is and how our students are doing as far as nursing programs. Linda works with those closely. She makes trips to those that are in a little trouble. For the most part, they're all doing very well, and our students are getting hired right off the bat. You can't find very many of them that are not employed who pass the NCLEX. Only, the only unemployed in nursing, if they chose to be able to something else. So they do get offers for positions throughout the system. On this particular slide that you see on the screen there, it has a listing of the largest programs in the system. Registered nursing for healthcare, health programs would be registered nursing for practical nursing, and then EMS, EMT. Those are the three large programs that we have in our system of healthcare. And the next slide, Linda wanted to share with you what our barrier would be, and the barriers for our growth in healthcare program would be having clinical sites and faculty. It's hard to find faculty with proper credentials for nursing or any other profession, radiology, surgical tech. It's very difficult because they make much, much more money in the field than they would in education. So it's very difficult to get some people in those areas. I want to turn to dual enrollment a little bit. Hit on that for you, and if you have any questions here. Dual enrollment within itself could take a whole day of presentations. I'm going to give you an overview of dual enrollment. If you have questions, feel free to ask us. We have a number of people sitting over there to help, and there's some sitting in the audience who've worked on dual enrollment this past year. We've worked to try to get that, the policy that was in effect to get it rewritten and revised so that we can make sure that it reaches the most students and the most qualified students to attend college-level courses. And we've worked on that quite a bit. And with the Career Technical Education Funds Scholarship Program, the students will have to be eligible to be admitted into a system institution. They have to have a two-point-five GPA if they're going to career technical programs versus the fact that if they're going to academic program, they have three-point-oh GPA. Eligible student would have to look at high-demand, high-wage, and high-skill courses, and they could take an academic course along with the career technical course, but they have to be concurrently enrolled in those particular program. But dual enrollment allows the students to take college-level courses while they're still in high school and get credit for those courses as they progress toward a degree in that program area. So that's, in a nutshell, what dual enrollment is. The Career Tech Division of our unit here has worked with, along with academic unit, has worked with the secondary schools to get, this slide, you're not going to be able to see everything because it's just a capture of it, to get all of the courses aligned so that every institution will have a number in the system. So for secondary, you have nine zero zero one for ABR one-eleven. So they worked very hard last year to get all those courses by five thousand. They had to go back and redo them by hand and give everyone of our course a number that will be used by the high schools, and then the high school courses will then easily translate so they'll all be the same numbers. So like, for example, again, nine zero zero one is the same thing, no, sorry, ninety-two zero zero one is the same thing as ABR one-eleven. So it will be the same thing at every school. At the secondary school, they know what that course is, and it transfers or relates right back to us directly into our system. So that was a system work, and they worked together to make that change last year. If you look on the tab E, you'll see the top dual enrollment programs. Top ten dual enrollment programs by head count. You have academic transfer courses, then you have welding, drafting and design technology, office administration, emergency medical services, medical assisting, and so forth. So their top ten are listed right there and the number of students that are enrolled in those particular program. These next chart, you'll see the top ten dual enrollment program by credit hour production. That number's listed there, and it's almost the same as the top enrolled program. You would think it would be the same, but yes, it's pretty closely related to those two right there. Any questions on dual enrollment? Yes, sir.
One thing I would like to look into, thanks everybody, there's certification in the state for people to handle potable water systems, drinking water, and wastewater systems. Current policy is that you're crediting agents or you have to graduate and then you can start. Would y'all look at top of these crediting, try to bring that back into the high schools for co-ops or dual enrollment, let them be able to take the test and the learning process, but right now they're restricted until after they graduate before they start.
We'd be glad to do that.
And the other part of that is they have to work under a licensed operator for certain areas. If we could start that in high school and ensure the process of them being certified, there is a big need for this.
All right, we can do water waste management?
I'm going to certify your drinking water.
We have had some. Mrs. Smith, we have had some schools, and I think they eliminated those programs, but we can go back and revisit them. We had water waste management program in some of the colleges previously. We'll go back and revisit those and see if we can restart them and do what you were saying. Then we'd start working with them, get the college-level courses taken early while they're in high school, and by the time they get ready to graduate, they can get the certification that they need to go to work.
We've been working on the co-op program.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir.
What influences welding technology being three times as many students enrolled in that program as opposed to all the other opportunities?
There's a big need down in Mobile area. I know that Ingalls and some other places down in Mississippi as well, they've been getting a number of our students to come and work for them. A lot of students come and get enrolled in welding, they get the skills that are necessary to get the job, and they get soaked up really quick and fast into the industry, and so there's a high need. I think we said at one time, there's about eight thousand jobs that are available for welding throughout the state of Alabama, and specialized welding as well, especially the aluminum welding, I think is really hot topic for us as well. So I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
It does. Do you have any data that identifies what percentage of those students in the high school, at high school level, that can go through these programs actually will trickle in onto the community college that's supposed to go into work?
Gene, can you answer that question?
We can, I can work with the secondary schools, people there across the board. It's a little bit difficult to predict how long they'll be there, so I can do a job
My thought process is just simply, if they learn how to weld in high school, they can get a job coming straight out of high school, that's a deterrent to them actually going on to college. To respond to that question.
And that does occur.
Okay. The next area that I'd like to cover would be the items that you will see more frequently on your approval agenda, which will be, there are three areas that you'll see from instructional services, instruction and student services, instructional programs, instructional sites, instruction equipment. So you'll see those three areas that you will see more often on your approval process for us from this particular division. I'd like to walk through the, briefly walk through that. And Trish Jones, Trish is the person who prepares this, she walks it through, she checks, she vets, helps us to vet it out with the schools and the institutions, make sure that it is appropriate before we make the recommendation to the chancellor to put it on the agenda. This is how we operate, and so what we have here is a process of the whole approval process. Let's start with the instructional programs. To do a new program, such as an associate or a certificate program, then the college has to submit what we call an ITSP, which stands for intent to submit program application. They're notifying us that they do, that they would like to submit a new program application. It's just an intent. It's a notification to us so we can start the process. We'll review, it has some requirements within that document that they must complete, and after we vetted those documents, then we'll send them a notice, notification back to them, tell them you can now start your application process. And then they'll begin the application process, and then it walks through. If you would, look at the next slide, the new program. Let me get that on the slide up here. It's that colleges must have approval by the board trustees, and ACAS is statutory authority to review and approve a social degree and certificate program. If you look under the tab, I'm going to walk you with the tab here. Tell you which one it is, just a second. Tab F. Tab F. That first sheet is just a sheet from ACAS, from Alabama Commission on Higher Education. So you can, those first two sheets, you can pass up of those and go to the actual criteria for evaluation proposal for new programs of instruction. It has all of the information here, the relevance of institutional It has all of the information here, the relevance of institutional role, the need for the program, the collaboration, if any, is required with among the systems or among the system institution or with workforce council or with other schools, the secondary schools as well. Program objectives and content, student availability and demand for it. How do you determine whether the course is needed or the program is needed? Usually they use surveys or they do advisory board comments and minutes would be attached, things to show that there is proof for the fact that there's a need for that particular program. Student availability, how many students want that class that they're asking for. And number six, program completion requirements. And if you know that in order to be viable, we have to have at least 7.5 over a certain period of time, a three-year rolling period of number of students who completed the program. So they have to justify how many students that want the program, how many will be graduating over a period of time. And then we'll look at the numbers and make sure those numbers will speak for themselves as to whether it will become a viable program. Program administration, who is responsible for it, who will supervise it? How are you going to, the accreditation requirements, is it, will accreditation be pursued? If it's NATF certification is necessary, if it's some other certification that's required for the program, we will then have those questions there that need to answer, answer the question to it. Financial support, does the institution document availability of sufficient funds? They must show that they have the funds to do it. They may say it's going to be generated through enrollment in credit hour courses. They may also say that they have a company that's going to support them, Alabama Power, Southern Company, or somebody who may support them in order to set up the class, depending on the need. They, sometimes we do get industries, industry to come and request us that we set up a new program, to Megatronics. I think one time we had something set up with Sheldon State, the Megatronic, the Mercedes Benz. So we get that request periodically and then we will make sure the funds are there. Distance education technology, will any distance education be utilized in the delivery of the program? And program viability, what is overall program viability level at the institution? What is the level of similar programs at the institution? So you don't want to bring a new program in that's going to be counterproductive to your other programs that you have in place. If you have something that's very similar, then you need to see how you can do options under that particular program. If you look at the green sheet that's attached in that same section, that is sort of a cheat sheet. I hate to use that word, that's a bad word. But it's sort of like a cheat sheet for you that we, I actually designed it for a couple of meetings ago so that you could see if you had any questions about how the instructional program works. So the graphic at the bottom is just a, just a quick little look at how everything's step-by-step. You go across the top and continue across the bottom. It gives you a step-by-step approval process there. I've attached a policy that's related to that as well, and then the guidelines to that policy. That's the approval, that's approval process for instructional program. The next area we're going to talk about is instructional sites. If you look at that sheet there, you see a listing of all instructional sites or the number of sites that we have. They are classified by institution, that means the college itself. That's what we refer to them as, the college or the institution. The college campuses, some colleges will have more than one site of campus. They may have a main campus, another secondary campus, another location. You have prison education sites, military sites, instructional sites. Instructional sites are those that are located within the service area of the college. And then you have off-campus instructional site. Those would be outside the service area of the college. Usually you, sometimes you have one college that may operate a special program in another service area. The presidents usually work that out and agree to having that in that particular area. So that's a listing of that. You have a total of about 77 instructional sites, period. And when I say sites in this term, I'm talking about all of the, all of the things, the institutions, the college campuses, the, so forth, everything there, you have that. So you have a full listing of those. This will come before you every year for approval. It's sent out to the colleges for updates and then updates for the areas. If they want to add some, if they want to delete some that are not being productive, then they want to make that recommendation. So we have that coming before you each year. And if they want to extend it to another, add other sites on, then those sites will come up as the institutions or the colleges or the presidents submit that to us for approval. So that's your instructional site approval process. And then the other area that we have is instructional equipment. And this is the third area, I told you three areas here. Instructional equipment is the final one that we usually see from our area. The request is usually made by the president. And then once it's made by the president, we, our staff in IASS, will go through and look at the impact on the program, the war completion information, workforce preparedness, is it supporting workforce, the number of students that are expected to participate in the program, and requests for additional information that's needed. We look for all the information, we kind of vet it out before we send it to the chancellor and for his executive board to review for approval for recommendation to you. So we'll have all that information gathered prior to coming to you. So if you have a question about anything related to the equipment. Then the money that's associated with that, of course, we have to make sure that they have the funds available and then that it's allowable to purchase on certain federal funds and state funds that have restrictions. Any questions on those three things? Instructional sites, instruction equipment, and program approval. Okay, thank you. The next slide you see is academic inventory. I mentioned to that earlier. This is the list of all the instructional programs. And then we have, they're listed by, I don't think we put a copy because each institution has a different academic inventory. So you will have 26 of those with about 19 to 20 pages each. So we did put those in there, but anytime you want to see any of those or receive any of those, we can get that to you as well, okay? They're listed by SIP code. The SIP would be Classification of Instructional Program Taxonomy. The next area I want to hit, student services. We have, that position is being, in the progress of being, getting a new director for instructional services, Ms. Sylvester, who was in that position, has moved to a legal area and now we are replacing her and is HR on the page. Joseph Direction is now reviewing applications for that position, so it should be filled pretty soon. So I'll give you a quick highlight of student services because we still have to do the work of the student services division, even though we don't have the director there. The next slide you have up would be, is a listing of just some quick stats there. You can see it, you have the information. I won't go through all of those. It talks about the median age of the, being 24.6 years of age. So you see it's not just students coming straight out of high school. It's those students who are coming back to us as well, or those coming to us for the first time. So you have some information there. The next thing is a set of listing of responsibilities. We deal with academic grievances. We provide guidance on admission issues. We supervise or organize all of Alabama Recognition Program. And we provide guidance on FERPA, that's the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And then we provide guidance on federal financial aid issues. Provide guidance on institutional scholarship and waivers. And oversee, we help with the Leadership and Childcare Scholarship Program. We don't necessarily supervise the area, but we kind of help them with that because it is a scholarship program. And service lends on to the Deans of Students Association. In addition, you'll see that we provide information on student assessment, student complaints. And we are working on a new complaint process that should be going up on the system pretty soon because it's required by the federal government. And provide supervision for the state approving agency, which I'll mention in the next few comments that which you have. Talk a little bit about reverse transfer. This has been a hot issue with the legislature lately. But we do have institutions who had already begun the process of dealing with reverse transfer. They, we have about 14 of our colleges that have more than 33 or 34 agreements with universities across the state on reverse transfer. That is when our students leave us early, the two-year college without getting a social degree and going on to the four-year institution. What they do when they get there, when they complete the courses that are required to have enough hours to have an associate degree, then they would transfer the, transfer, uh, refer the, reverse transfer. They would transfer the credits back to us and then we will have the option to award an associate degree to those students. It's a win-win situation for both of us. We, it increases our completion rate. And the research shows that students who get that milestone are more likely to persist and get the bachelor degree and go on to get further degrees. So we are working closely with that. And we're working with the National Student Clearinghouse to get all of our colleges. I think we have now all of them part of that. And that information, we'll start sharing. They'll be able to send the information directly to us and we'll be able to contact the students and award degrees. So that number of awards should go up in many categories over the next few months or next year or two, you have the information there. So our goal is to have 100% participation. I think we have 100% participation of our students with the reverse transfer capability. Any question on that? Then I'm going to hit quickly, state approving Joan. Joan Johnson is our manager and director for that program. The state approving agency is, it's there to protect our funding of veteran education or recent education and training for veterans. That's nutshell, what it is. She does monitoring. She has about 187 entities or institutions that she has to go and visit over a period of time to make sure they're in compliance with the federal laws regarding veterans affairs, veteran funds, and making sure that the institutions are treating those persons with the proper respect that they should have and spending the funds according to the guidelines. Notchel? That's what it is. So I'm going to pass them over, two or three slides there. And this one is Leadership and Childcare Scholarship Program, which is coordinated by Virginia Frazier, Virginia Miss Hannah. It provides scholarships to our students who are in childcare industry. These students have, here's some of the requirements that they must meet in order to get the funds. Now they can have a bachelor degree and still receive some scholarship funds, but as long as it's the first time that they get a CDA, which is a credential for students in child development, child development associate, that allows them to work in the childcare industry. And so we have 19 of our institutions that are participating in this. And the scholarships are for fall and semester and spring semesters. It pays tuition and some fees. We put selected fees because sometimes we have people who want to pay certain things like insurance and it doesn't cover that, but it does cover the other institutional fees. And the next few slides would just simply be some information for that person right there to kind of, things that we've done over the last year or two, just some information that we've worked. These are the kinds of things that we do that are not listed that I didn't go into detail on, but you'll see a whole listing of that as well as some initiatives. That right there is a whole list of things you want to ask by any of those. As you look down on this, you may do so. And here are initiatives for 2015-17 that's to support the chancellor has outlined four areas that he's outlined as for his student success. And we'll give them all right, chancellor, I used to have them all on the top of my head. But Centers of Excellence, Student Success, Professional Development, and Leadership and Professional Development, those are the areas in which we talked a lot about in his, under his supervision and direction, that we want to support those. And initiatives of the system, whatever you have that we are looking for. We want to increase the reverse transfer agreements that we have in our system. We have 26 colleges. We want to have all 26 of them actually with signed formal agreements with other institutions. Some of them will have multiple institutions. We want to advance the policy development process, which will help us. And this helps, it guides us and it protects us. So we want to get that done so that we can make sure that we are following what it is that you all desire for us to do. We want to implement our new instructional program process. We want to utilize data to make decisions. And that's why we have developed some of the forms and format. And we have a number of programs that are doing pilot programs. We're trying to follow those pilot programs and see what the impact is so that we can take that impact and apply it to system-wide if it's positive. If it's not good for the system, then we don't necessarily want to take it and use it. But we do have a number of those programs that are out there that we're trying to monitor. Continue to identify methods for embedding soft skills or workforce essential skills into the curriculum. We've been doing some research on that for the last several months to help our system institutions to find ways to increase our students. And because I think you hear a lot about the fact that many folks get the jobs, but they have the hard skills, but they don't have a soft skill. And they lose their job because of the soft skill. So we're trying to make sure that we are turning out good products, good students. And then establish accountability of dual enrollment by doing a course consistency, a grade consistency pilot over the next few months. I'd like to quickly introduce our staff. I know it's taking a little bit long and I was allocated chancellor, but let me mention a few of our staff. I want them to stand so you have them. Dr. Osen, would you stand, Director of Academic Affairs. Gene Dudley, would you stand? And he's the Director of Career Technical Programs. Lynn Decatur, Director of Health Programs. Joan Johnson, who is the Manager and Director of the SAA, which is State Approving Agency. Trish Jones, who is our Instructional Specialist. She's a generalist, she's all, she helps all of us. Sandra Crawford, who works with SAA. We have Nikia Robinson, who is our Associate Director for Transitional Education with Developmental Education. We chose, decided to change that title from Transitional to Developmental. We have Virginia Frazier, who is our person who is the Leadership in Childcare Scholarship Program. Did I miss anybody in my staff along the way? Thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple. Ron, you asked about industry credentialing in the high schools. There is a lot of that going on. In fact, it's the wild, wild west right now. Philip Cleveland's driving a lot of that work. And we can certainly get him here and talk to this board if y'all are interested from the K-12 side. But it's a huge, huge push. And I mean, every career technical director that you talk to at the secondary level is pushing for industry credentials of their students out of their, you know, out of their programs. There's some real, there's some real glaring examples of that. Gary Van Williams and Russell Shoals. But it's just a huge push. I don't know how that's going to work in terms of, I think we probably need to do more coordination between secondary and post-secondary to make sure we're not stepping on each other's toes. But that's, that is definitely an ongoing effort there at the secondary level. And then I have a question for you.
Let me, if you don't mind, addressing the credentials part of that. We are in concern with the secondary schools, working on credentials. All our colleges, if they, they're looking at the programs that we do have credentials for, and what Gene refers to, and we refer to all the time, stackable credentials. Gene, you want to address that quickly?
Sure. Actually, I've lived in this for many years. And we've got it structured so that, that we do not only the students from high school that comes to us after people have already gone. So they build, continually build good examples, partnership. We have them for NCCPR, the construction industry. And we're providing those at no cost to the students and doing that for all of our colleges. No more of that. So we have every single program in career tech has at least one credential that is available to them. And we've been pushing it super hard from ARI and continue to do so. We're trying to build more stack. We're trying to make it also regional, depending on some of the specific needs. As long as God knows, NCCPR is everything. And so we're continuing to do that. We have automotive, NATF, et cetera. So we're very closely aligned. We're very cognizant of the CRIs that are, that is an accountability measure for the high schools. So we are very closely tied and we're doing that. And we continually need and try to make sure to cover that. And that's a big component of dual enrollment as well.
And that actually was my second question about dual enrollment. How many students do we actually have that are taking advantage of the scholarship? And then how are we going to do, how are we going to measure success of that program? Outcome measures so that then we can go back to businesses and get them to invest in that again and again and again?
We do have some information in that dual enrollment section, tab E. And I think I did not go completely through all of the tabs. That will tell you about the number of students that we have in the program. That's...
But the academic transfers aren't, aren't scholarship students?
No, they're not. Scholarships, and then, and then this is a mixture of programs. We have not broken them out by scholarship separately because all of the CTE program, not necessarily, were paid by the scholarship itself. Some systems... were paid by the scholarship itself. Some systems, LEAs, will pay for their students to take certain courses. They were doing this before the scholarship got into place. And so, they continued that agreement with the schools. And they increased the number of scholarship opportunities because of the funding.
Have we known how many scholarships, exactly how many scholarship students there are?
We can. And that was housed in Roger, where's Roger?
It's actually, it's actually, Roger not working on this enrollment. We now have it so that the colleges can know that, that we can determine what those-
That's awesome.
Yeah, we have all that.
That's awesome. And then can we, I guess this would be more on the finance, the tax policy side. But it would be good to know in generalities how many business partners we have, you know, what, who, who's investing in this? Because I don't really even know who they are. I don't, I don't know where, you know, if we've got, I mean, I'd love to be able to promote that in my area. That'd be good to know. I don't, I don't know. That's really not our information. If we could, I don't know how we get that. Do we get that?
Roger, yes, you can get that information. I think, I think they're tracking it through the Workforce Development Office. Roger Ford will be able to share that with you.
Can I just, I know we're gonna do a deep dive into remediation, but you just gave us, but this is, so we've got point twelve, point thirteen, point fourteen with, I mean, like, no decrease in remediation. And you did a great job putting a positive spin on it.
Always, always. We have to, that's what we're here for.
It doesn't seem like a-
Okay, we'll cover that.
Yeah, I know. That doesn't seem like a-
Any other questions for the trustees or Dr. Crawford?
Thank you so much.
Dr. Crawford, solid job. Now, you, your directors are important. I thank you for what you do, for the importance. I think this, we can do this.
Thank you so very much. And we would be glad to present anything separately that you want to add to this later on.
Thank you, Bruce. Let's move on to our next item. Bruce touched on it just a moment ago. The whole area of underprepared students is certainly an area that's a state and a national, a national issue. And we have today three of our stars from the, from the system presenting. Barbara Ann Spears, Nikia Robinson, and Annette Cook. And I don't know who's gonna lead off, Nikia lead off. But they have a lot of valuable information. And I would have you know that we work closely with K-12 and are working closely to make sure that we're working like-minded.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the chancellor for giving us this opportunity to come before you to give you an overview of Alabama's underprepared student and developmental education in the Alabama community college system. But I would be remiss if I did not say that we are very fortunate to have the chancellor at the helm, who is very passionate about our underprepared students. And also our presidents that sit here today. I've had the opportunity to visit a number of our colleges. And without their leadership and certainly without the faculty and staff at our institutions, we would not be moving forward and making the strides that we are doing right now. So, we're gonna present some of that information for you today. Barbara Ann Spears will give you an update on the statistics. And then Annette Cook from Shelton State Community College will provide you with one of our model examples of how development, developmental education is being addressed at one of our system institutions. Okay, we have provided for you all. I know these slides are a little bit small. So, if you look on the right-hand side of the notebook that you were given, you have those PowerPoint slides for you so you can look more closely at the information. Look in the back of the, I'm sorry, look at the back of the notebook, white notebook, it's a PowerPoint slide. Everybody have it? The back folder. Okay, you got it? Okay, I'd first like to begin with these two graphs that show the 2014 graduation and remediation rates. If you can, you can see by this data that we have made significant strides with our graduation rate. But unfortunately, when we look at our remediation rate, it has stayed consistent at about thirty-three percent for the last four years. And what this data says is that although we're making the strides with graduation, there still is an academic readiness gap that persists. Okay? So, certainly while Alabama's college and career readiness standards aim to address these academic gaps, that simply means that we still have much work to do. And it's-
Wait a minute, is it a readiness gap? Is it a, is it a preparedness issue? And, and a-
Scott, I'll let her go ahead and finish her presentation. And I'll tell you what, we'll take questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Okay, thank you. Certainly means that we have much work to do. And it will be through our collaboration with all of our educational partners that we can certainly close this gap. But also, this means that we have to be very cautious about the policies that we implement to make sure that we're not undercutting the potential benefits that we are trying to see in our colleges. Okay, the board was provided with a paper that kind of outlined the history of developmental education. So, I hope that you all had in your leisurely time an opportunity to actually read that article. But if you did not, I've provided for you a few snapshots of the historical relevance of developmental education. And I would first like to say that we have always had developmental education as soon as we had our higher education in the United States. For example, in eighteen forty-nine, the University of Wisconsin started its first preparatory program. In eighteen seventy-four, Harvard started its first preparatory program in English. In nineteen oh-one, Joliet Junior College was established. And it's at that time that the community college began to take on some of those underprepared students that the four-year institutions did not want to deal with at that time. We've seen that consistently happen as our four-year universities have raised their, their admission standards, that our junior colleges have taken the helm or taken the bulk of those students who are underprepared. There certainly were waves of increases in our developmental education enrollment. One that I have shown to you on the slides is when our baby boomers actually entered college, we saw a significant increase in developmental education. And from the nineteen seventies on forward, we have continued to see a steady increase in the number of students requiring developmental education. Our, the American Association of Community Colleges has issued a statement on this and it reads, "Our community colleges have embraced the opportunity," excuse me, "to provide remedial education, basic computation, composition, and reading classes to help students meet their ultimate goals." So, it has always been a part of the community college mission. And so, it's not a question of if we're going to offer developmental education, it's how we're gonna do it and how many we're actually gonna serve. And I will say to you today that our colleges are working diligently to decrease the number of students that are having to enter our developmental education courses. And I will give you some examples of that as we move along. So, I have two definitions for you that are very important in our understanding of the content that we are going over today. One is college and career readiness. And over the years, the definition of college and career, college and career readiness has differed. And it depends on what stakeholder you're actually speaking with. Okay? But more recently, there has been a consensus in about twenty percent of our states have adopted a definition for college and career readiness. And if we collectively look at those definitions, then we can pull out this commonality. And it is, it is defined as a level of preparedness that enables students with academic foundation, knowledge, and skills to enroll successfully and advance an entry-level college credit courses without the need of developmental education. Okay? Then there is developmental education. If you recall, Dr. Crawford mentioned transitional education. If you look at different journals or different articles, you will see the term remedial education. As he has said already, we have adopted the term developmental education because it is simply not about a course. We are developing our entire student. And so, not only do we include instruction, we include placement, we include support services, which include tutoring, counseling, mentoring. And we also include advising, which is critical. And Annette Cook will provide some information about how they are doing that at Shelton State. Okay, I'd briefly like to just go over some national stats as they relate to developmental education. For example, nearly sixty percent of community college students take at least one developmental course during their academic career. Thirty-three percent of students who are recommended for a developmental education never enroll. Seventy percent of students placed in developmental math failed to enroll in gateway courses within two years. And only fifteen percent of students with developmental education actually graduate with a degree or certificate within three years. So, these stats are staggering. But they have also caused many stakeholders to again, look at how we're actually administering developmental education to our students and actually implement policies that lower the hurdles that our students face. So, what does a developmental education student look like? What are the general characteristics? They are typically first-generation students. They're in need of financial assistance. More times than not, they are minority. They have had inadequate opportunities to prepare for college. And there are a number of reasons that fall under this. It may be simply a lack of pre-college knowledge. It may be lack of testing skills when it comes to our standardized testing. And it can be a misalignment of high school expectations with the reality of college. Because we serve traditional and non-traditional students, we also have to be aware of the external factors that our students are up against. And that may deal with employment, the fact that they have to care for their families. And those things can certainly impact their matriculation in our colleges. I also want to provide you with a brief overview of how our students end up in developmental education in terms of the process. Okay? It is part of our admissions policies that all of our colleges will actually give students a mandatory test to determine their readiness for their math, English, for their math and English courses. There are exemptions to this. Students who score twenty on the ACT in math, English, and reading. Students who are transient. Students who plan on auditing courses. Students who have already taken our, our assessment test, which is our COMPASS, and have scored a, a score above the cutoff score, they do not have to take our, our placement test. But for those students who do not meet those exemptions, they are required to take our placement test. We currently use COMPASS, which is an adaptive test, which allows students to take multiple test, multiple choice questions. And depending on how they answer those questions, the test either goes up a little higher in the questions or it may bring the questions back down to a lower level. And the students receive a score. And based on the minimum cut score for our, for our colleges, students are then routed into math, English, or reading. Okay? And so, I've outlined the typical course sequence that our students can enroll in. Our colleges have the autonomy to choose the course sequences that they deem fit for their students. And if our, if the students are ultimately successful, then they will go on to our college-level credit courses. Unfortunately, a number of our students get caught up in what we call that perovian loop of developmental education. So, we have, a number of our colleges have implemented some strategies, some course revisions in order to help move our students forward and get them out of these courses as soon as they're academically ready. And I'd next like to talk to you about some national reforms and initiatives, initiatives that are occurring here in the United States. And there's one that I'd like to highlight in particular because this initiative actually happens on the high school end, okay, before they actually enter college. And these are known as transitional courses. Okay? And by definition, transitional courses are high school courses that are developed by both post-secondary and high school instructors that allow students no later than the twelfth grade to actually enroll in a course. If they complete it successfully, then they will no longer need developmental education in the two-year college or in the university if it's agreed upon. Twenty-nine states have transitional courses. I would like to highlight Northwest Shoals. They actually have what's known as an early math scholarship program in which they go in after COMPASS testing, identify those students who would move into developmental courses and give them an opportunity to take that math developmental course. And if they are successful, receive college credit, not college credit, I'm sorry, receive credit for that developmental course and no longer have to deal with that once they come to the college. And that's an excellent recruitment school, recruitment tool. They get them very early and they can move on to Northwest Shoals. Okay? There is another national example that has gained a lot of attention. And it's a Tennessee model known as the sales model. They too take students in high school. If they score below a nineteen on the ACT, they are required to take this transitional course or bridge program. If they are successful, in many instances, these students get through that program and they can enroll and do enrollment and get their first math course out of the way. They have seen much success with this with the seventy percent pass rate with their two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen data. And as of this year, this was only for math. And as of this year, they're beginning their first pilot with their English as well. So, this program is a model throughout the nation. We also have some national initiatives that our colleges are very involved in. One of those being Achieving the Dream, which is a national reform network that tries to, tries to help low socioeconomic students and students of color to actually move into post-secondary education. We have four schools that are involved in this currently. Bevel State Community College, Central Alabama Community College, Calhoun, and Wallace State Community College, Hansfield. We also have the national, we have had the national summit on the redesign of developmental education. We were at the table. This was sponsored by the American Association of Community College. Bevel State Community College had the distinction of being one of the seventeen schools that were invited to this redesign. And it was during that time that they presented what they were doing at their college and received training and workshops. And what they will do is as they work on their redesign and get their results, this information will be shared across the nation. So, we have a national spotlight on Bevel State Community College as well. Complete College America is a nonprofit organization that is looking to increase the number of certificates and degrees. One of their FOSI is actually Developmental Education of Course in which they are recommending core requisite developmental courses in which students can enroll in a college-level course along with a core requisite that provides supplemental support for the students. And then we also have the Center for Analysis of Post-Secondary Readiness. This particular organization is actually looking, putting a broad scope on what's happening here in the nation and providing reports that everyone can go and view and use as a model. We also have reforms and initiatives right here within our system. One in particular is our, a number of colleges have instituted boot camps. These boot camps can either happen, we have some colleges that have done these with high school students. And also, once the students graduate from high school and are getting ready to attend our colleges before they take the COMPASS assessment exam, they provide them an opportunity to refresh themselves on the content and knowledge that they may have a deficiency in before they sit for the course placement. And that is one of the biggest hurdles for students. They don't prepare for this assessment when they could do well if they just had a little bit of help beforehand. So, a number of our institutions have done this. And then they also do it on the back end. If a student has taken the COMPASS test, has not performed well, give them an opportunity to go through that boot camp and then retest again. And again, that's trying to help them either test out of developmental education or at least move up a course. We have learning communities in which students will go into student cohorts, take these courses together. It builds a great deal of camaraderie. These students have support throughout these learning communities. We also have accelerated learning program, which Northwest Shoals again is nationally recognized for this. It is a core requisite model in which students who are right on the cusp- It is a corequisite model in which students who are right on the cusp of that cut score are invited to take this course. So they register for the college-level course, and they also have a supplemental course to help bridge that gap or help bridge those deficiencies that they may have, and they've seen success with that as well. A number of our colleges, almost seventy percent of our colleges are in the midst or have already implemented or are going to implement course redesigns. And those course redesigns are geared to actually accelerate our students through developmental course sequence. We have what is known as the Imperium Math Model, which is a mastery-level model. It is, utilizes computer-based learning, in which students learn at their own pace. One of the greatest things about that model is it makes students accountable for their own learning. The students move at their own pace, work through their modules, and only after mastery can they move on. It allows students the opportunity to not take only one, but two, and in some instances, three developmental courses within one semester, thus accelerating out of developmental education and moving on to their college-level course. We see that more so in math. We also have hybrid instruction, which is simply we have a computer component, and the students actually meet in lecture, possibly one day of the week, depending on how the college has it set up. And then we have many terms, in which we may have two developmental courses, and the students can register for one during the first eight weeks and the second one during the second eight weeks of the semester, therefore completing two courses within one semester. You'll hear more about the SOAR Institute in just a minute, so I will wait and let Annette discuss that. And we also have a Developmental Education Task Course, which we have representatives from across our system, and we work to review and look at policy to make recommendations. We, this year, our focus will be on professional development. We do have ALAID, which is the Alabama, excuse me, the Alabama National Association of Developmental Education. And we also have our annual conference in November, but we want to provide other opportunities throughout the year to provide knowledge and expertise to our sister colleges. And we will use our capital, our instructors and our staff to actually provide this professional development. Okay, next. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Barbara Ann Spears from Central Alabama Community College. And I want to talk to you a little bit about some numbers. Now, you should, if you look at this graph, this first graph includes a lot of the information that we normally see in our state. This is the information that Alabama Commission on Higher Education collects every year, and it shows the number of students each year who leave high school, our public high schools, and go directly into a two-year or four-year public institution in the state of Alabama. And so if you look at these numbers, they don't look so bad. What is alarming about these numbers is that if you look at the green bars, they will show you that over the last decade, the number of students leaving high school and going directly to college has declined by about five percent. So there are a number of reasons for that. But if you look at the numbers who are entering developmental education, which are those yellow bars, those numbers are actually increasing. So that does give us some concern, but still, because this data that people are much more likely to see includes all of those four-year colleges where you get a number of students who are entering those selective admissions programs and have spent a lot of time in college prep-type classes, then the numbers for the state of Alabama don't really paint the picture that we see in our two-year colleges. So we're going to share that information with you and show you what we see. All right, so in the Alabama Community College system, our first-time freshmen have consistently placed into developmental education at the rate of between forty-six to fifty percent over the last five years. If you look at 2014, we had twenty thousand fifty-seven entering freshmen. Of those, nine thousand two hundred and eighty-seven were placed into at least one developmental course. So pretty consistently, almost half of the students who come to us do place into at least one developmental course. That demonstrates that they're not prepared for college-level courses. It also means that, as Dr. Robinson told you, they're far less likely to complete their course of study. And it also means that in order to complete their course of study, they will have to be with us longer, because they will be engaged in developmental courses. So there are a lot of things to be concerned about when you look at those numbers. And they, despite many different things that have happened in our state to try to prevent that, those numbers have remained pretty steady. All right, if you look, we would tend to think that, well, the Alabama Community College system has a lot of older students, and maybe they've been out of school for a while, and for that reason, those students are the ones that are causing our numbers to be higher. But if you look at this data that shows our fall 2014 cohort of freshmen, what you find is that the bulk of those students are eighteen or nineteen years old. Seventy-one percent of our freshmen in the fall of 2014 were placed into one or more developmental courses. So that's a really alarming number, when you see that eighteen and nineteen-year-olds are fresh from high school, for the most part. They've been out of school, they have either come immediately to us or maybe been out of school a year. So that's a very alarming number. Now, of course, we do have more students of that age, and so we wanted to look at it in this way as well. If you look at the first-time freshmen by student type, we've broken it down here to show you our traditional high school graduates, which are those who are immediately entering college, and then our non-traditional students. And what you see is although we have many more traditional high school graduates, in 2014, we had thirteen thousand two hundred and ten. And, but what you find is that the percent of those students, which in this last year was forty-seven point eighty-six percent, is about equivalent to the percent of non-traditional students who've been out of school for a while. So you have about the same number, even if you've been out of school several years, or some of our students, many, many years. Our students, fresh from high school, are placing into developmental courses at the pretty much the same rate as those students who've had plenty of time to forget what they learned in high school. So that is also an alarming number to us, because those students, for those students who are fresh from high school, that information is fairly fresh to them, and they're still often unable. Now, we know that maturity does play a role sometimes, and Dr. Robinson talked about how they sometimes don't prepare for the test. So we've been trying to account for that through these boot camps and other preparatory measures that we do to help ensure that they have the test-taking skills that they need. But we are consistently seeing that students who come to us directly from high school are not often prepared for college-level courses. And so our concern is, of course, that as students come to us, if we aren't able to test them and place them where they need to be, we have agreements with four-year institutions through the Articulation and General Studies Committee to ensure that our courses, our English 101, for instance, will transfer to the four-year institutions. And part of those agreements have to do with the content of the courses that we offer. So if we have to, in an English 101 course, cover all the content that we're required to cover, plus remediate students, because we allow more students into that course who are underprepared, then we have a huge challenge before us, because our system is time-based. Our students are in English 101 for fifteen weeks, whether they're prepared or not. And so that is a great concern for those of us who work in the developmental education area. And now, we're going to have Annette Cook give you an inside view of one of the many wonderful programs that are going on in our state with developmental education. We thought it'd be helpful to you to see how one of these programs works.
Good morning. If I'd been teaching a class for this long, we'd have had a stretch break by now, so if y'all need to, feel free to wiggle a little bit. I want to start off by just taking a moment to talk about my story, just real briefly. I'm a community college grad. That was my favorite part of my education. Both of my daughters have graduated from Alabama Community Colleges. One's graduated from UA and one's a senior there now. I also have a vested interest in high school world, because I spent most of my career as a high school math teacher. But I was fortunate to get my dream job and teach math at Shelton State. And at whatever level I was at, I have always had a heart for those who struggled. So I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with those in a more intimate way at Shelton. But I want to talk first about community colleges as a whole. And y'all, excuse me, I've had knee surgery, so if you see me propping, I'm going to set my cane down, but if you see me propping, that's fine. But I was not going to miss being here today. For years, community colleges were all about access. And the last few years, it has changed to where it's more of a focus on success, how the students do in programs. Because for years and years, probably when most of us were in school, it's just, we're going to school, we're going to college. But then it became more of a focus in the last five years, particularly of how are they doing once they get there? And that's where a lot of extra accountability has come in. We do have more at Shelton State. We average sixty-five percent who come underprepared for classes. The national stats, I mean, the state stats you just saw, but each school is different. And at Shelton, we have close to sixty-five percent. And, you know, a lot of people have this right-to-fail or sink-or-swim mentality, but we do not believe that way at all. And Dr. Heinrich was one of the first ones to say, you know, we have a moral obligation. I've heard him say that so many times. We have a moral obligation to address this population. And, you know, when you know something's wrong and you don't fix it, that's a breach of academic integrity in our world. So that's what we're trying to do. So he put a group together to see what we should do at Shelton State. We created a program called SOAR, which stands for Student Opportunities for Achievement and Resources. And it's been phenomenal so far. We are always looking for ways to improve. But since SOAR started, another thing we've had to face is the challenge in the admissions policy. There was a recent change where, before, where students had to have at least a high school diploma and an ACT score of sixteen years ago, now they just got to have a diploma and a transcript. And it could be from an accredited school, or it might not be from an accredited school. And we are getting quite a few, this fall, I've already got several calls about students who are coming, who had an occupational diploma from years ago and want to come to college now. That creates a lot of challenges for us. We are doing our best to meet their needs, and we hope they can be successful. But our challenges continue to grow in that world. It's really the greatest challenge I've had in thirty-one years of education, to be quite honest, but I love it. I love what I'm doing. Okay. So SOAR has three components. We have tutoring for all students, and that's a big piece for us, because we don't want to stigmatize those who need to come for assistance. And so our tutoring is for all students. We have advising. This is a huge, important component that I'll talk about more in a minute. And then we have instructional support of developmental courses. This includes professional development. We always invite our adjunct, which are what we call our part-time teachers, to come to professional development, because many, many times, they are the ones teaching the developmental courses. We have been able to work on that a little bit, and we have more full-time faculty teaching developmental courses, because everybody's realized that over half of our students are needing these courses, we need to have our best people working with these students. And so we have made great strides with that at Shelton State, and we will continue to work to have our best people working with all levels. I believe in teaching all over the board, upper level and lower level. And so that's what we're striving for. And then our last, the last part I want to show you there is that this is not something that just happened overnight. At the time we created SOAR, Dr. Heinrich was the president of Shelton State, and without his support, he provided the resources needed. He gave us a prime location on campus. We visited places all over the state, all over the southeast, actually, that were known to have great developmental programs, and it broke my heart, because some of them would be like hidden out in the gym somewhere, or in another building far, far away from the hubbub of main things going on on campus. We were given prime location, and that has been key to us being successful. And then he was like, we were able to update that environment. We weren't in just, you know, concrete block wall rooms. We have a nice setting. We love to share what we have. We share, we give tours quite a bit, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But we are very fortunate to have had that vision, because it takes a commitment of not only, you know, we're going to do this and have the determination, but of finances as well. It really does. Okay, here's a quick summary. We started SOAR in the fall of 2011. We have since then seen three thousand ninety-seven students who placed into at least one developmental student, and these students have met with a navigator. And navigator is what we call our advisors, who work with these students. And they have had over eight thousand six hundred twenty-four one-on-one meetings. So I share that with you to let you know that we are trying our best to address their needs. They're not just going through the cycle and nobody's guiding them. Because if you look at the numbers, most of these students, as Dr. Robinson said earlier, they're first-generation students. They don't have anybody telling them how to do things or what to do. And that is where a navigator comes in, to help them know, what's my next step? How do I do that? And that sort of thing. So we're having a lot of meetings. We've had more than twenty-four thousand six hundred tutor sessions. We have had more than seventy-eight thousand one hundred students who have come to SOAR for other reasons. We've created an environment where they come to study, do homework, use our computers, that sort of thing. We have a math lab that we just started this past fall, and the math lab, in two semesters, has had three thousand three hundred and fifty-five student visits. That's a grand total of over a hundred and fourteen thousand student contacts. And I don't say that, I'm not saying that to brag. I want you to realize it's important to create an environment where they will come, because most of their careers, they've been told they can't do something. Most of their education, they've been told, I can't, you can't do this, you're never going to make it. They hear it at home. If you've never seen the study from Rice University, Tony Holland showed this earlier this summer at a group of some of our colleagues, there's a thirty-million-word gap for higher-income families and lower-income families and what those kids hear at home, the number of words they hear at home. So half the time, you're telling them things and they don't even know what it means. So you have to really step back and try to get in their world to help them, and that's what we're trying to do. And as I mentioned earlier, we've had twelve colleges come visit SOAR since we've been open, been open, been serving, helping students. And we've had four that have had us come to their place and share what we're doing. And we share everything we have. If they like a document we created, we send it to them electronically and let them use it, because this is all about helping students. It's not about us. Let me talk real quickly about our tutoring program. We have the only nationally certified tutoring program in the state of Alabama for two-year schools. There's only, I think, three four-year institutions that have it, and we are the only two-year system. We have a very diverse group of tutors. We highly, we believe in, we highly believe in training. I mean, that's what helps you get certified, is that you document the training you have. But we train, 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 because if you've got the wrong person sitting there helping a developmental student, you are not going to get them going in the right direction. They will give up and walk out the door. And so our tutors are trained every semester, reminding them the do's and don'ts. You never talk down to them. You never say, well, you should know this, even though maybe they should. Maybe they should know that when they come to college, but we don't dare say that, because what good comes from that? You know, we never try to demoralize them at all. And we have a very diverse group of tutors. We have student tutors, we have retired teachers, we have grad students from the University of Alabama. We have a very, and we have people in the community who have the credential to do this and just do it as a part-time job, because they enjoy helping students. So it's a very exciting thing to be in our tutor facilities. And I won't go through the rest of the tutoring services there, but those COMPASS help sessions, that next-to-the-last bullet, that's what Dr. Robinson and Ms. Spears were talking about, where we do boot camps for those who test. And this summer alone, we just got this started two summers ago, this summer alone, we had seventy-seven students come for help for just the math part. And we had, and our math, I should have brought the stats for this, but it's been amazing how many are getting into college-level classes once they come to the help session. So we are trying to come up with more and more things to help them get past the hump one way or the other, either move up or get into college level. Now, many, many colleges have developmental courses, some actually have developmental programs, but the one thing that truly sets SOAR apart from other places is our navigators. And that's what I want to focus on. These are our advisors. Everything we read and researched, every place we visited, we Everything we read and researched, every place we visited, we asked two questions. What would you do the same and what would you do differently? And across the board, everybody said, we should have included advising when we set this up, and we didn't do it. So that was one of our priorities. I mean, we knew advising developmental students was going to be one of our big pieces of SOAR. And it's been phenomenal to see, to hear the stories and to see the relationships built because that is the key. It's been so successful that we have now expanded the similar concept to all of our students. Many students would come to college, they'll go in the advising center, they might see, they might see me one day, they might see Dr. Robinson the next day, they come back another time, they see somebody totally different. It's not starting over every time you walk in the door. And so we are now assigning every student who tests to come to Shelton, whether it's they use their ACT score or whether they take Compass, they are assigned an advisor, and we start that relationship. Because the relationships are the key to them sticking with it and finishing their program of study. It's very critical for navigators particularly that you have the right personnel. Some people can advise a regular, a college-level student, some people are not cut out to advise developmental students. So you've got to have the right personnel. They've been called a couple of taglines. I gave you their advisor on steroids and a GPS for college. And it's very true, that is what they do. We use intrusive advising, that is the model that is used. There are many models in advising out there. Intrusive is where you're kind of in their face, so to speak. A couple of examples I'll give you. If you've called and you've emailed and you've tried everything to get in touch with a student and they don't return your messages, guess what a navigator does? They go to their class. And when they're coming out of class, they're standing there waiting for them. Why haven't you returned my messages? Another thing we do that's a part of the intrusive piece is that we let every instructor know, hey, you've got so-and-so in your class, I'm their navigator. You let me know if they're not showing up for class or if they're not doing their work. And we also, this is the biggest piece, we put holes on their camp. We put a hole on their camp where they cannot go sign up for classes or drop classes until we have at least had a conversation with them. Because that's what kids do. They'll go change their schedule with the drop of a hat and sign up for something that's not even going to be a part of their program of study. And so, once you walk out the door and we move the hole, then, okay, you have the freedom, you're the young adult here, you have the freedom to make that change, but we're at least going to document that we had a conversation about it to let you know, this is not in your best interest or this would be in your best interest. So that's been a big piece of this. We do meet them immediately after Compass testing because that's when we need to keep them there. We've been, I've been looking at numbers, I'll show you this first one here. 81% of students who meet a navigator after placement testing enroll. And Dr. Robinson shared earlier that on the national stage, only 67% do that. So this one little stat right here shows you something's working, we're getting them in school. Persistence, they re-enroll the next term. 72% of students with a navigator was still enrolled. These are our most at-risk students. And that's very uncommon for those, for that population. And then fall-to-fall retention, like they were here in fall 2012, they came back fall 2013. We did a three-year average of 12, 13, and 14. Those three falls, 52% were coming back. Again, that's sometimes higher than our whole college, excuse me, our whole college average for retention. And the pass rates in developmental courses for students that have a navigator are higher than students who don't have a navigator. So they're making great progress. And then we just recently calculated Gateway Courses, and I used English 101, and I used Math 100 or Math 116 because we're kind of early in our program. And I'm looking at all of our students, that's the one that most of them had gotten to at this point out of getting out of developmental, but you can see right there, a little bit higher. That's kind of exciting to me. You know, that 83% of students who have a navigator that have taken English 101 have passed as compared to the whole population, which is 72%. And then you see the number there for math, which was even more impressive, which is usually the other way around. As a math teacher, I'm always hearing, you know, how bad it is with math. But we were very excited about that. We will continue to track and watch this all we can. I will throw in one extra thing while I was working on numbers. We keep up with the ones who could come and like, maybe they were really, really close to being to the next level course. And so we advise them, you need to retest, you need to take Compass again and see if you can bump up a course. So I took the ones that had done that, had bumped up to English 101 or had bumped up to Math 100 or 116, that they were in a technical program, and didn't need to take any remedial courses, didn't take any developmental whatsoever. The pass rate for those students was lower than for those who took the developmental courses and had a navigator. So they might have made it by the skin of their teeth into that course, but their success rate was not as high. So again, that advising piece is huge. It's really, really huge. And then last but not least, I'll talk about instruction. We offer the orientation, the college course that is required for anybody who wants a degree or a certificate from Shelton, well, not certificates, but the degrees from Shelton State. It's a one-hour course, it is phenomenal. It's one of the most exciting classes to teach. It's all about the college. And we also offer study skills courses. And one of the new things we did just this summer was we launched a study skills course for students who are in the auto mechanics part for Mercedes. Dr. Crawford mentioned the agreement we have with Mercedes, and it's going strong. We have mechatronics and we have auto mechanics. The auto mechanics group needed a course in soft skills because Mercedes people were telling us, okay, they can't get here on time, they don't know how to communicate with their coworkers, y'all know this better than anybody. And so we have a course that they take. And I went and sat in on it a few times. It is phenomenal. I mean, I'm hoping we can range it out and get it approved to be in some other programs of study as well. Because they're not getting that at home. And so if they're not getting it by the time they get to us, then I feel like it's our responsibility to do something about that, so that they will be more. My husband, I hear it every time, at home all the time too, he deals with it in his job. People who don't know how to, how to, you know, behave properly at work and communicate, be on time, the whole darn yard. So that's an exciting course. They mentioned redesign of math. Here's the bottom line. This generation of students cannot be taught the same way we were taught. The sage on the stage, the, you know, just lecture the whole time, it's not going to reach most of them. So especially in math, we have looked real closely at how to redesign how we present things and get them actively involved during class time. Not just throw it up there and teach and expect them to do it when they get home because what's happening? Most of them aren't doing it when they get home. So we have now tried to redesign, and there's a lot of different methods, but we did it this past fall, we launched tires after two years of prepping for that. We had a 14% increase in our fall pass rate, and then in the spring, a 15.5. And that's comparing it to a nine-year average at Shelton. We had that much of an increase. So we are thrilled with how that is going. And we've already mentioned boot camps. I've got a couple of testimonials to share with you. Here's one from a student. He graduated this May. He said, "The SOAR Institute has been a tremendous help in my success at Shelton, especially considering I've been out of school for 25 years. There were so many times I wanted to give up when things got hard, but my navigator would not let me quit. I believe every student should take advantage of the services the SOAR Institute has to offer, especially the navigators and tutors." I mean, that makes it worth coming to work every day right there. You know, that'll wipe out a week, a week of bad days just to hear, just to hear something like that. And here's some more samples. We do have, we graduate of the Mercedes program, has been in developmental courses. We have a mother of four who was just thrilled when she finally got to come to college. She has a navigator and is being successful. You see the list there. It's why you get up in the morning when you do something like this, you're really hopefully making a positive difference in students' lives. This past spring, it was almost embarrassing, one of the students who won the most awards at Honor's Day at Shelton was a developmental student who had a navigator. She had gone through the program, and she, everybody thought, wow, she's winning everything. And she had once taken developmental courses. So it's been amazing to me how they are so determined. It's like, you've got, I've got this opportunity, nobody's ever helped me before, but I see that you are going to help me, I'm sticking with it. And that's also been very refreshing. There's no doubt, it does take them a little longer, Barbara Ann mentioned that earlier, I think, but they, they're just determined. They want this more than the average student who just comes in from families who maybe already had somebody go to college. They really do have that desire. And then here's a parent testimonial from last summer. I'll just give you a second to read that. I'll give you a little update. I just heard yesterday from this student's navigator, she was really struggling with math. She was in SOAR, getting help, she was doing all she could, and she had to take it again. She passed math this summer. She is on cloud nine. She is going into childhood, child development, and it'll be, she'll be perfect for that. She's one of our little bright lights that we see around a good bit. But just to summarize, developmental education is necessary, as we've tried to explain. Its philosophy and methods are applicable wherever, whenever, and wherever the development of human talent is a goal. And the success of developmental education is everyone's responsibility. So I think, Nike had one more, Dr. Robinson had one more quote she wanted to share.
I'd just like to end with this, and this is a quote that I found in doing some of my research. And it states, "It can be asserted accurately that bridging the academic preparation gap has been a constant in the history of American higher education, and that the controversy surrounding it is an American educational tradition." But as I said at the beginning, it is through collaboration, through significant efforts between our education partners that we can certainly make some strides and some changes in these consistent numbers that we've seen over the past few years in terms of the number of students requiring development education. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions from trustees? Ms. Hunter?
We have time.
Yeah, this people can slide.
So I'll produce some perspective on it. One thing that the board has done prior to the break, and the board is really tight heart on the K-12 side for the quality that we need. Because you certainly need, you need students who are coming to you as ready as we can get them to be able to do college-level work. And that's a perspective and a banner that the board has carried on the K-12 side. Right now, all juniors in high school in Alabama take the ACT test. And with the compass going away, when?
January.
Yeah, so the compass is not going to be a product that ACT offers anymore, so I hope that y'all will use the fact that all juniors take the ACT and use that as something that can be useful to you, you record with ACT several times. So that's the perspective of the K-12 side, that they're working, working, working to get these students ready. And they want to send these students that are ready. But where they get frustrated is that it feels like a moving target for general entry requirements. And that when we send them, there's different measures for different colleges. And so they get frustrated because they think, well, what's my target? What am I trying to fit for a general interest requirement for a recent graduate? So that's the frustration that they, that K-12 has. And so I'm hopeful that we can work on that together, is the word. I think that's a great opportunity. It's also certainly understandable, because the navigator part is awesome. It is awesome, and it's obvious that our students need it. I think that we will always have developmental education. We will. I mean, that's just kind of the reality of it. But because of those terrible stats that we have, students that fail and, I mean, they fall through the practice time and again, even though we do a great job, if we can, I was reading in your, where you said, you know, let's see, the summary piece, which I loved, but you said developmental education is necessary. But I think the real question is, when and how much? And you, your writing, I looked at your research about Heinrich that you've done in this area, and you've done a ton of work in this area, and know it very well. And I think now that we can identify students that are going to need to be remediated as juniors, let's see if we can back that remediation up before graduation.
I think that's, fix it before they graduate from high school.
Yeah. And then, I think we're really all swimming downstream together.
And that's actually the best practice, we look at the state's statute, and do this very well. They do evaluate juniors, juniors who are not where they need to be spend their senior year, basically mediating. Those who do need to go, they're involved in doing a little bit, whatever else. And then when they hit the community college before your doors, they're ready, before college-ready, college-level courses.
But still probably needing navigator and the intrusive, I love that, advisor on steroids, that's awesome. Yeah, so I thank y'all, really thank you, Chancellor, for bringing this up. It's a really important topic. And I think that it's a lot to cover, but you did a great job covering it, and I appreciate, I really appreciate y'all taking it on as a profession.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Robinson? Or, I'm just going to sort, I'm just curious, what's the cost of it?
I cannot, Dr. Robinson, I need to get that number, but some of that was done, I mean, some of that, I don't know if you want to count furniture, personnel, everything where we were remodeled. It would be very significant. I mean, I don't know if you even remember, I can get that number to you if you want to. But a lot of people asked, one of the very first questions when Dr. Robinson came to tour SOAR for the first time, the very first thing she asked me when we finished going over everything was, well, what if somebody doesn't have the resources to do this? And to me, the answer is very simple. You start with one navigator, and then you just build from there. When you see how that's making a difference, and the important part is to track this, don't just do it, you know, you've got to keep statistics, you've got to watch what's going on. But you start with one navigator, see the difference they're making, and then your college is going to want to invest in this and seeing that it improves rates overall, pass rates
Thank you very much. We have lunch for the trustees, as usual. Yes, I did, just quickly, and I'm going to follow up during our work session. Thank you for that. It looks like to introduce a couple of new individuals in the department, and we'll leave a report to them later. And we begin with Dr. Tim Alford. Dr. Alford is a name that's familiar, I think, to most of us. Serves as Special Assistant to the Chancellor for Economic Development, and has just done a great job in the few months he's been with us thus far. Dr. Doug Jensen, who is here, is President and CEO of ETN, Government Technology Network. Charlene Finkelstein, Charlene is Administrative Assistant for Human Resources. And Linda Ryan is Economic Development Assistant. I guess that's a good reason for them not being here. See, any of it, these are individuals who are new since May, since you guys came on. I'm sure we can use them, and say we've been doing a great job. But I'm going to just wrap the rest of my report for the work session, which will follow the higher-up operation. Very good. Once again, staff, everyone that made presentations, I know it was a bit lengthy, but I think it was all quite substantive, and we appreciate the information and the orientation. And once again, Dr. Robinson, Ms. Fears, was clear about your passion for what you're doing. I do have one announcement. In collaboration and consulting consultation with our Board President, Governor Bentley, we are going to start establishing a committee structure for the Board of Trustees. And initially, we're going to have one committee, the Facilities and Infrastructure Committee. And these individuals have agreed to serve on this committee as Chairman Chuck Smith, Milton Davis, and Crystal Brown. And I thank these trustees for agreeing to serve on this committee. And as Dr. Crawford mentioned, there were certain things that, processes that certain things went through before they went on our agenda as action items. And this will offer one more review as we do add to this committee structure down the road for different committees. And we'll communicate with this, and review with this, this process, and look forward to working together. We have, we'll meet, we'll meet this afternoon in a work session, probably a little late starting, it's set for 1:00 p.m., but we'll meet a little after that. And then our next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is September 17th at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. Chancellor, if you have anything else you want to add, we should do, we have lunch in the conference room after this. I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Second, always in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned.